Any public discussion of any ideas on the agenda? Do you need to go?
Yeah.
Okay, let's drop down and pick up the automatic fire control hook up sort of fire panel and we do get a fire.
Okay, real quick, I'll just give you a... Back when they installed the new fire panel, Luckinville, it was our understanding they'd bring it up to working order and put it... well, they're not licensed to do that. You're only licensed to supply the panel. So we have to go to a company out Oklahoma City in the Norman area that will come in and bring it up to working order. And we have to do that to meet code. And with y'all's blessings, we'll contact them. I think it's gonna be around $700, $800 to do that. Uh, I know we gave you a piece of paper goodie with the contact on it, but we have to have that to meet fire standards.
In other words, Archer Electric or some electric, if the license couldn't do that.
Right, it's gotta be a fire company.
Oh, okay. I understood that Archer Electric could do it.
Okay, well, if they're licensed through that, we could get with them and see what we can do.
I mean, you know, we've used them a lot of times.
Right.
Out of...
Right, so...
Might check on that, see if they can.
I'll do that. Also, uh, we got the guard washer put in, we got the dishwasher put in. Uh, the thing with the dishwasher, we'll meet the sanitizing codes and all that with it, you know, through the standards. You know, we're trying to follow the Oklahoma jail standards and all that. We went ahead and got the screens put up in the jail that will save a ton on stuff being hid and all that. You know, we've come a long ways for that jail. Now, no contact visiting and all that, so we haven't had any issues with Concombrean with that. So, but the big things, to meet code on the fire panel. We need to get that in place, get the P.O. in place and get it done. But I'll have Amanda check with Archer Electric. And that would, truthfully, that'd help us out a bunch. It's right here, it's local, and they could come in and get it done quicker than what we have to meet with the guys up in Norman. So, uh, we have a lot going on, a lot of investigations, we're staying hooked up. So, anyway, uh...
It's all her phone.
(laughing) But anyway, uh, we're in the process of getting our estimate needs done. We're probably gonna have to have a new unit put into that, so starting to nickel and diamonds is pretty hard, hooking some of the older ones. Any questions from anybody regarding that?
I got some down there in my building I loaned you.
Yeah, (laughing) but other than that, everything's going well, so...
Need a motion to accept that and let them go ahead and get it hooked up?
Well, you want them guys to look, you want them to check the people first, you want them to check people first on what?
Well, check with people first, but whoever's gotta do it, if the license, I take it it needs to get done, people too.
Yeah, right, yes.
How many motions?
Second. All in favor?
You have to check, you have to change that to...
How's that?
Says having fire control, come hook up new fire panel up and re-read the jail code. It was insane, man, click. He'd say, and contacting Archer and whatever else.
I can, I think what we can do, let us go ahead and get with Archer now. Let's get to be, get what the prices are gonna be, then I come back with y'all and we can make a motion in.
That's good, that's good.
That way we'll be...
No action.
Yeah.
No action.
All right.
You wait till you're in, beat your, no, your motion in.
Motion.
I'll withdraw my motion.
Okay.
You can withdraw your sentence.
So you can get some bids and come...
Right, I'll get a man to get on stage, thank y'all.
Thanks, Rick. You got that now?
Let's go back and get the minutes.
Yep, I couldn't act him out without that in there, right? Did you know that kid that played for old Spur, Stargill kid?
No, no, not really, doesn't exist.
He's a great nephew of Willie Stargill, a baseball player. And Tony told me Willie Stargill come from down there, really. He was a ballplayer, baseball player back in my time. I don't believe ever saw him or heard him, but... Plays the Pittsburgh Pirates, big guy, can hit the ball. That was Pittsburgh Pirates, played a ball team, Clementine, Stargill, and all that. Boy, yeah, 'cause our house, we had to watch baseball 24/7, Dad loved it. Naturally, got some kind of cable, oh, that was always on TV.
What did you do, the remote for years?
Yes, yes, I had to get up and change the channel. I'll be on the floor, laying on the floor, see, get up, change the channel. That's what you had kids for. Yeah, listen, and turn it on.
Yeah. Thought I was at the channel, just broke the...
Right.
Mind I put you in?
Yeah, I've got a colored, I got a colored TV. We don't have, we don't have anything, uh, about city sale, do we?
I do.
Do ya?
Copier and...
What do you think?
Small items that we took down and picked up.
I didn't know they sold stuff like that.
Yeah, yeah.
Sell anything, won't they?
Copier, and we had two or three tripods and instruments that were back in the 1930s, survey equipment that...
Do they take a cut of that, is that how they do that?
Yeah.
If you sell it $5, you're not gonna get much off of it anyway?
No.
No. Yeah, like, every auctioneer takes a cut of it. Don't they leave? They all make, every auctioneer takes a cut of something. I'll make a motion approved.
Sergeant.
All in favor?
Aye.
(inaudible).
Look, I heard one guy say, well, much stuff down there, but Raven Stonehopper went down there the other day, he said, "A lot of junk down there."
Is that what a lot of it is, just junk?
Well, road graders, pickup tractors, whatever, all the CEDs, like CED eight, it'll, what, it'll get money from it and everything else.
So you guys aren't even getting money from it?
Huh?
You don't get the money from it, right?
County does, when you sell them, yeah. See, these are getting money too. I've never been there, it's quite a sale, a lot of stuff. I really did, really, need to go back, see if I can find it really, really cheap. Use road grader to run, fix my driveway, neighbors.
I got one, but it's down in Houston, kinda hard to use up here.
We'll always throw it back.
Just travel back.
Yeah.
I loaned it to a friend and that's where he took it, but it worked out.
Really? Cause you're good, ready to bring it back?
No, he's all right. His dad was vice president of Caterpillar. His dad was nine years old, needed a project, and I took that old grader down there and he rebuilt it. They still use it.
That'd be a kick in the cat, though. Uh, Stonehopper sent me a picture of a grader they used in mines, about this tall.
That guy invited me to his 100th birthday party and brought me a steak that was worth what that road grader was, so I guess I got paid back.
That's awesome.
I think that'd mean you're not, you live more than alone.
Yeah. I can use it anytime I want to, but gotta use it down there.
I told him just keep it.
You know, I'm playing big enough to load it in, but I'll buy it back.
It'll be a long way to road, won't it, guarantee you that.
Take care of being that butter sandwich you're eating, right?
Well, the washer dry and dishwasher herself, really, they're all really happy to wash and dry, they can handle loads and...
Yeah.
They'll run better than we else.
Yeah.
Before it can do it. We did good on that one. Of course, we only got one inmate now, but they may change, but...
Just give it time, it's starting to warm up.
Yeah.
If you wanna go back to that, I got information for you.
Okay. Give these time, we can relax.
Oh, did you?
He gave me a copy of the State question, exactly.
The state questions, the legislature going over it from the back on? Did you see my word up? Bidding, services are... This is almost six months in, I was like, "Yeah, please, please." I'm like, "I'm going, it's easy, man."
Where I was talking, you're probably more...
I have to go talk to mine, because we're one, right? It's gonna be a lot easier to like your things now, let's go. Gotta really understand how to do all that, I really didn't, I was...
It's awful.
Yeah, we're gonna have to go on a campaign.
Can I ask, how do you build that awareness, you know? People understand about that, it's really all about...
Raven's doing a lot of campaigning, ain't he?
You what?
Raven's doing a lot of campaigning, ain't he? I don't know, I haven't, before he's there, I enjoy CD meetings.
You what?
But he probably didn't...
Oh, he had a secretary, or...
Why?
He went around the secretary, right, and secretary was all planned.
Yeah, I saw that. That's the worst part. I think the way I'm gonna be, the good, the good governor, but it's called, I've been in there for eight years behind him, the governor. I feel a little tired of him, yeah. Todd Landry's getting around the city of Tulsa, he's really after that. Kayla's got to, all the speeches, those people game, defend him.
Kayla's listening.
She knows. Yeah, picking off people, like, if anyone asks you the question, what do you answer? I'm like this. He's very nice. I talked to Donnie. A few frank orders need to have the fish fry, hot fish or whatever it's called, or a good fish, that was, that's good.
How you get by that cheap down there? I never can.
What?
Martin machine.
I got, because I have one of these about every day.
Do ya? Okay.
Got two units down there right now.
What?
Martin machine, and they got this lot stuck for me, he is good.
He's about as good as you could ever find.
Marshall 220 CLC, Martin, what did, what did he tear up this time?
Oh, the, about the tractor.
Yeah.
They've got a goose neck trailer and a fuel trailer down there right now, we're going after tomorrow.
Really?
Our big green fuel trailer's sprained a leak.
Don't show anybody.
And the weld seams.
Really? That John Doohay trailer?
Have you got the one with the tread blade on the outside, or?
I think so. And they, they weld it.
See, when I bought mine, he said they changed from that tread blade on the outside to a different, because they experienced some leaks on the first one. We haven't had any yet on that one. I hope we don't...
I laid back through the shed one day and I walked in there and I had a pool.
Yeah.
It pulled right into it.
I tell you what, that thing's a lifesaver, too.
We have missed it.
Don't you have a welder to weld it for you?
Yeah, for, for you. I got a welder to weld it, but I'm not having to do it in Cherokee, cause I don't want all the houses, all the windows blown out.
All the houses. Well, you could be in that town. Consider it, one time, one bank's cheaper than the other, on the lease first, all that. Let me do that stuff. That is, that is true. About time we were one, we leave, cheaper, we'll be another one. Oh, this, it's your turn, your turn, your turn.
Spread it away.
Yeah, spread the wealth.
As a joiner?
Yeah, guaranteed, guaranteed money. I talked to the concrete counter egg teacher over there, Saturday, and he allowed to, he finally turned his phone off, our phone calls about that fire.
About train?
No, refuge, refuge.
The federals.
Their fire was Thursday.
Color of fire, huh?
Yeah, they burned Thursday and Friday.
David Hammond called me right off the bat.
Well, Saturday.
Said, "We need to be ready, your freezer." Forget it, that'll go, but they over rubbed it, or a burn band, they're gonna burn.
Sarah, that's all they had, the afternoon, one was calls, calls, calls.
Well, they had the perfect day.
One get ahold of me and I told them, I said, "That's boys out of the Wichita Mountains."
That's right.
Yep, that's right.
Sure played havoc with those who have trouble with their lungs.
I'll tell you, is that...
You have smoke here?
Yeah, oh yeah, that night, that night when the wind went down, that stuff just coming in over town.
Oh, so it was just falling?
It was awful.
Yeah, Fairview was getting a bunch of calls too, Tressa and I talked Thursday, and she's like, "Oh my gosh, there's tons of calls coming in."
Oh yeah, cause it was headed that way, the smoke was, I was laughing, I said, "Okay."
Well, they, they got the perfect day to do it, though, wasn't, the wind wasn't high in the south and north, they had all the right conditions for them.
They burned 6,000 acres Thursday and 2,000 on Friday.
They said you wouldn't got to it anyhow after it lit.
That guy ran a lot of field, though, in this country.
I said, "Well, tell them next time you call, call federal wildlife refugees up there, see if, see if you can..." Tell me you don't like that. Yeah, little, poor old Charlie, said, "Yeah, I just turned my phone off." Yeah, I've been meaning it, and I come out here, and, "Oh, wow."
Thanks, Jay.
What?
Oh, he's pouring now, my blankets.
Yeah, I think we'd had it, I was there, ain't none, hadn't been none coming through.
That is the fifth, my wedding anniversary was yesterday, I had one...
You better not forget what today is, if your anniversary was yesterday. You better not forgot it.
I didn't, I didn't.
Okay.
She told me that it was the 11th, and she told me that you're supposed to give them steel for the 11th, they have it. I said, "I'll get you some handcuffs."
They'll need access board meeting in the morning at nine.
Oh yeah, on TV, or...
That what?
Nine, access board meeting tomorrow.
I won't be there, make the early funeral, cause it can. So, I gotta go, I gotta go.
Is that the auditorium?
Sorry.
Ever they're doing that? The auditorium?
Yeah, and, and Greg Graham's coming up today, they're gonna stream it into the gymnasium and the classrooms, so the overflow, you're, you're not gonna get, that auditorium's gonna be full of retired ad teachers, administrators, friends he had everywhere. The general public's gonna have to sit in the classrooms and out in the gym and watch it on Big screen.
Where's the, where they gonna bury it at?
Wellston.
Where is that?
Oh, it's way down by Ada.
Yeah, it's down there by, uh, down in Ford.
Down in Ford, yeah.
Down in there, that's where he was, that's where his son, he lost his son, thirty years ago, something like that. That's where his son's buried, and that's where they're going.
This is basically a memorial for him.
Yeah.
I was trying to decide if I'm gonna be able to make it up there, but...
Quite a ways away.
Bet they wouldn't just lie here.
Four hours or so?
Yeah, that's it.
Oh, yeah.
They'd work it, watch it all.
Where is that?
Are they canceling school tomorrow?
Yeah.
Here, I've been looking at all that too, just... Hey, I was just telling, you know, somewhere...
Lane told me, he said, "Well, if he could set up and tell us, he'd be mad, could've canceled school on his behalf."
He sure would. So, does Miss Glane takes over?
No, Mrs. Croft is, is in her appointment, she's got her superintendent, her damn children.
I wonder if they would promote my dad.
I asked that question to two boys, remember down at the back of the ballgame, and they're trying to find out whether they can regularly do that, or they have to...
I'll run it up for, just to see what you can get. I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carried. Okay, let's go back over again.
Oh, okay, yeah.
Fire control.
Okay, I didn't read this that well. The automatic fire control is the company.
Okay.
Archer cannot do it.
Okay.
Okay.
So, I'll leave it to you. Amanda said, "Get with her," because like they said, and some of this stuff that they're talking, bringing up the code, due to the courthouse being a historic building, it may be grandfathered in, we don't need it. Like your flashing lights on the fire alarm and stuff like that, so...
Well, I move we accept the American Fire Control to come and do it. They're sounding like they're the only one liking it.
They're the ones that caught this when they were up there doing the hood and stuff, so...
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
There you go.
And, uh, one other thing that I did not bring up, uh, we are due to do our yearly walkthrough of the jail.
Is this a good day?
Well, we gotta get with the judge, the DA, and then one of y'all, Mr. Mash.
You going, you going in this time, Kyle?
I went in last time, I'm done in almost every time.
I know. Who am I supposed to go in? I was already in there this morning. I didn't see it, maybe they let you out this morning.
Today, we'll get with the judge and see what he's got open, I know he's got court this morning, today on...
What time? At most, I was up there, there wasn't nothing going on.
They're supposed to have a protective order.
Right before this.
So, but if y'all wanna get, one of y'all wanna talk to the judge and get Megan and wanna come down, we'll get Vernon to go through and with y'all, and we can get that done.
She's here all day, Monday, all day, Wednesday, half a day, Friday, right?
Right.
You don't have room anymore in there, right?
One.
One.
And there's no females?
I think. So, y'all wanna set the date, you can get with the judge, and we're planning on doing it, or if he wants to do it this afternoon, we can do it then.
You'd be available this afternoon? I'm not.
I'm not. Well, I can be.
Well, I do, I can.
It's very hard to judge, hard, you're hard to judge, and Megan, and everything else, and ask them. Judge Megan, who else? Vernon here?
Yeah, Vernon's here.
One of us has just gotta be there, right?
Right.
So let me know.
Okay.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you. My purchase order.
Anybody go in?
There's fairgrounds and sheriff, don't send those, you send those.
Hey, Toby, do you wanna apply for the jail that says Toby was here?
Go ahead.
So do you wanna apply to your cell in the jail that says Toby was here?
Do you wanna take a picture of me in there?
Put, put the date of the, of the year on there.
Where's that from, it's not here.
Like a night for Rose Spring, June?
I don't care who wants to go in. Not much to it, you tell them get in the cell. That's fairgrounds, isn't it?
Yeah, all those.
So, fairgrounds.
That's a fairgrounds, isn't it?
Thank you.
There's it.
Mine.
Did your mom receive anything?
No, she's still...
Questions or anybody, what, you know? Why, they walk through the survey?
Didn't done anything.
I'm sure it's funny, they've been everywhere else.
Yeah, everywhere else. Megan was ever seen there, Shepherd's ever seen there, she sent somebody else through down there.
That is a half mile, I've got the underoast trees on a half mile, I need to...
She has not. Somebody was gonna give her a number off.
Maybe it's why you're in this one here.
Paperwork, so she can call him.
So that gives us...
That's mine.
I think it's down here, Toby.
I'm still thinking about why they ain't been on her mom's half second or her mom's mile. Make a motion approve.
Sergeant. All in favor? Aye. Road coaching permit.
How many motions approve?
Second.
Right. You got the only one.
About a board, huh?
Those protective orders don't take very long, do they? I've, I've never got one. Probably a good thing. Oh, I got, I could, I could spend the night at Crossbar Hotel, right downstairs. I mean, if they didn't have a protective order around. No, they didn't, it's usually beat on the, that's what they do.
It's like that.
Well, you're mapped right, next page.
We got three there, actually.
Three?
Three different kinds.
What's mine?
Well, it's way down there, isn't it? There's a board.
What is there?
Polyline. Polyline.
Seven twenty-three. Nine.
Just way south, south, north, west, alley.
Yeah. Gateway, I'll get way back, I was gonna say, that's not around it. We're drilling. Seven twenty-three twelve.
Yeah, it says five nine twelve.
Okay. Twenty-three is a lower tier down there. Drive up across. They're not drilling down there, though. Is that worth? So they're gonna, we drilling down there hardly? Water wells, high one. I'll have to check it out, have to get them closer to us, Lenee.
About to fire control.
We gotta use that company.
You have to use fire control. We can use, we can use an electrician to pull the old box out. I stand corrected what I told you earlier, my fault. But we have to use fire control.
In the house, yeah, why?
Yes.
Yep, we do, and we, we approve that.
Okay, I'm sorry, we came to an office and I had him reversed.
Just don't let it happen.
I make a motion approve?
I said it.
Oh, yeah?
All in favor?
Aye.
All in favor?
The chair, what, a towel dispenser, it's not working. Fina said she told us about Friday.
Yeah, she told me about Friday when I was leaving.
It's still not working. She can roll paper towels. Give me a key and I'll get it fixed, I'll fix it.
No, what I said is she told me Friday as I was leaving.
Oh, okay.
Kill me, small.
Is that the building engineer?
She sure wouldn't wait if she was leaving. She sure didn't go good, she was, she was okay.
She was, yeah, but she's in over there. I read her well, Sean.
Building, building engineer.
Engineer. It's big enough. You just put engineer on the title. So, cash, not on one's just.
We just spelled it a little bit.
Like the Smithsonian, we have an engineer for the whole. That's what I was thinking, good.
Whoever sees the maintenance.
March was the first month that we could actually appropriate it in.
It's nice to get ten months for that.
Well, yeah.
It's a means of start.
Yeah.
That's what I thought that was, I looked at it, I was okay. Nineteen thousand, some, right? Or sixteen thousand.
Sixty now.
These kids that are called range managers now, guardians. They can have all your access board numbers there?
Um, I have not.
I don't, they'll just drag me out there instead of any of these postholds.
Thursday, what I'm doing is going to the, I have to meet them. Yeah.
I'll be back at lunchtime.
I didn't probably call. Mr. Williams, I'm sure he's not wanted to go.
Figured Willis was probably going.
Yeah. He probably won't have enough to have.
I don't know whether.
Well, Willis goes up there.
Both of them down, yeah, his students are still going on the summer. He's like a triumph. So, how did they?
I don't think so. I don't have a big bill there, no.
Some of the kids were their cousins, but no.
They never done. I haven't seen Harold Vic. He's not getting that much, because I've seen him Saturday morning. Todd, Todd's second, I'm out, they work up the bar. You don't feel the earthquake shifting?
Yeah.
I would, I would have, but it was my wedding anniversary.
She was napping on the couch.
Snapping on the couch and felt it, Doug didn't feel it since.
I felt the first thing barely, because my, my finger chairs doing this a little bit, and on the face up there, yeah. Second one lasted a long time.
Yeah, I thought he'd never give up.
Me too, I thought, oh, it is, the big one.
What time was that?
Nine.
Nine last night?
Evening?
Nine fifty-seven or forty-seven, I can't remember.
I felt it, but it didn't, it just was, it wasn't long. Just, just kinda hurt it, a little shake.
So Max didn't call you about the fire?
Nope, Max didn't, David did, but I think Max was aware that they were gonna give up. I know he was.
No one else tried to burn on you?
At your three call, burn man lifted?
Nope.
I could've, I was driving the bus the whole time and I wouldn't answer my phone and they'll give it to Kirsten and I said, just lay it down and let it rain. He didn't talk to David Hammond. I said, that David, tell him that.
Sign up top.
You what?
Sign up top, not down below. You signed the wrong spots.
Oh, God, I did.
Were you around Toby with that train?
Helena, yeah, in Gultry? Gone over, yeah. Been to that before. That's why I needed to, my, get the whatever, the, the barrel of, on my stuff on my phone.
Oh, yeah.
Because Gultry Fire Department, the part of them are over on St., St. Dave's Dock Road, which is in Iowa, Iowa County. And Jake Boss, we're pretty glad he had, kept his yard, big yard, mowed around, he's doing, that's the new house, it's gonna burn down, had it.
Spark, some breaks or something off the train, I don't know exactly what it was, but.
I did notice that.
They stopped the train from what I was told.
Where?
I don't know where it got stopped, but it got stopped.
Oh, yeah, you gotta call Fort Worth and call, yeah. Last time we had that, Miley's telling him, we had to call the train, because he stopped. Called Fort Worth, said, tell them move that damn train. Why? Because your railroad car's on fire, you idiot. Yeah, it cut on fire, it burnt the railroad. Yeah, when cars on fire.
I got the guy's name in my phone. If you have anything like that, named Troy Boone, he'd have had all of that and I've got his.
We've had his.
Cell phone number to call if there's a railroad problem.
There was one like, about four miles west of, east of Gultry, you know, like track. Right there in Gultry, like Sidwell's tanks or anything else, yeah, it burnt the houses up to the, the. I meant it over there, because they sent south to Gultry first, I think, I had a structure, I couldn't figure it out. Anyhow, we'll, we'll prove that or not. Make a motion approved.
Sir, all in favor?
Aye. Anyhow, I don't buy all these telling, I look up, damn, we got a fire over here.
So is it doing it multiple places?
It ain't the first time, but they get bad bearings, they said, yeah. They have burned their railroad track off, railroad right away off any other hell.
So scary.
There's a lot down here, now, you know. There's a lot of wheat fields now, so town of Gultry wasn't good, no. Look funny scene, look funny scene, fire trucks just drive through people's yards and houses, sprays. Well. Yeah. That state road, that blacktop is in front of my side, Garfield County, so there, yeah. Jake Boss has a big fancy house, and he has his all right, they work right around. Everything. Let's see, Chris, well, the white rust, the white rust smudges on the fire department, what, what is it? It's the fire truck, yeah, yeah.
Sounds like a maintenance problem.
Huh?
Barriers are.
Yeah, the hot box detectors weren't working, I guess. But yeah, I need first, I don't, I don't think they stopped it in McWillie's, it would have had a problem out there. I don't worry about that stuff.
When was the last time it happens either?
Every one of them trains controlled out of Fort Worth, Texas. You call that, you call that number on them X bills? Huh? What's a tin hauler? Dumb engineer, idiot. A culvert, a tin culvert, what's a tin called, Bill? And then they tell you, well, we only go two feet, that's there's another one in the state bills, the railroad just wants to go two feet inside the rails. But if you wanna replace them with horns or they want you there, they get mad if they're not there. Oh, yeah.
Fell asleep there for a minute.
Because I argued with him, I said, look, it's Indian, he said, three railway, he said, no, it's not. I said, look, I see the farmer's fence, the farmer's east side, that. Thing the water goes to, I'm gonna call the thing the water runs underneath the road. Oh, one of that things? Yeah. It's yours, it's inside the farmer's rideaway, it's inside the rideaway. The forefront of this is about the fire, salt plains, so. The hand, everybody's dirt. Say, you gonna eat court after dinner or anything, the judge?
Today we don't have court at all. Plus there's somebody in jail I don't know about. You wanna go arrest somebody?
No, we gotta inspect the jail. We gotta have the judge and the commissioner, who else?
DA, DA, AJ.
And the DA.
DA.
You might come up to the meeting and see if they all want some time.
When the meeting is done, yeah, because Jay says he can't be here and I'll do it and get it done right quick. I mean, I've been a jail ward once, standing there.
We all know.
Tony, we can put a plaque on himself.
I know, we need to put a memorabilia.
I've done it, I've done it every year since we, Toby was here and, but every year and the date. There's a pretty good drawing on the wall, my women's, well, my, I suppose the women's are clear up, I guess they climbed up the pencil. We used to all three of us go down, all three commissioners.
Mm-hmm. I'll be a day if we get it done in time, but I gotta wait until two thirty.
At one point, two commissioners have been in there, for other reasons.
I don't think Doug was ever in there, was he?
Yeah, he was. Because the next meeting, he made a comment about the air conditioner working in there.
So he stayed overnight there? How many murders did it burn? Second.
All in favor? I'm like, how do we finish here?
Whoa, whoa, whoa. Oh, that was the appropriations, sorry. I didn't mark it. Well, I've been in my, my slide. Except they couldn't have tobacco there, so you're. Make a motion approve?
Second. All in favor?
But on the, you have a legislature on.
Allocation of alcohol bearing tax. Harold Vic needs to be here to see that.
Well, if it don't pass, they could probably drink, this is eight thousand two hundred and thirty-six dollars, it won't be.
I know.
You keep informing them people that, it was ten thousand last month. You got a state legislator, somebody that wanted to run the bill about putting tobacco back in prisons. Having to smoke, smoking areas and everything else, they got tobacco there now, it's just.
It would, it would prevent a lot of people from trying to smoke, I mean, that's probably one of those common things smuggled in.
All the time. Cell phones, tobacco.
And if you're, someone left your canteen, you're making money off of it. Prisons are. And now it's there anyway, but no one's making any money.
Right. Uh, we're getting closer.
I make a motion through.
Second. All in favor? Burn man.
Can you take off this week?
Yeah, Ellen. High fire danger, yeah.
Regular, gonna see Wednesday.
Right. Make a motion approve it for two weeks.
I second.
Now, on the piece.
We did have a request to consider, if you have a trash barrel with a lid on it, if you can burn like you can cook, burn the trash that they're housing.
Got grass around it or what?
I have no idea.
I'd like to burn my trap, my trash too, it's probably not pretty big too, but I don't have that.
Yeah, Aaron with Burlington.
Aaron Smith called me. He's got three people that called him that need to burn their trash and they burn in a barrel with a lid on it.
I don't have a lid on mine, but. If you're gonna okay that, you better have, they better call downstairs and tell them what they're doing, it was okayed by you, but if something happens.
Aaron said he didn't care if we just left it like it is. And I think we just need to leave it like it is, we've already.
Because if you do okay.
Lot it in motion and, and they can, they can pile it out in the back of the barn till it rains or something.
Trying to dust it.
Toby, you can throw yours over on the neighbors somewhere and that way.
He's got a burn bit now, we can light it. Backyard at school.
I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye. But we don't put it on for two weeks.
I don't care, we can do that.
I, I said two weeks.
Okay, that's good enough.
That was the motion.
It's good enough.
I, I'd have just put a month or two months, I wouldn't have just any time, we would have to keep doing it.
I know, I agree with you on that, but.
I don't understand why the situation, how long you can put it on.
Yeah, it's a force, I.
We're probably really not in compliance now, because you're supposed to call, how many, how far out rain, rain's supposed to happen and stuff like that.
It's only like three days.
We don't have any rain in the.
I brought that in this time.
Maybe Saturday. Yeah, and it, on my phone, it put in capital letters, possible.
Possible.
Charge, and it was capitalized.
And I did, I did reach out to all the fire chiefs and they were all wanting to keep it going, so I, I have that.
We got, we got, we're still on it, too.
Yeah, but we're exempt from the.
We're not in that.
We're not in, they took us out and Grant County out.
Oh, it is.
Several counties they took out.
Pretty much stopped in Woods County.
Yeah, it's west, in west.
Is that criteria, do you guys wanna call me with them?
No, I don't want that, I've got one. No, I haven't yet, I've got one.
They're pretty small, don't they?
Oh, no.
Yeah.
Doesn't matter, we'll put it on.
Declaration of Charlotte for fifty-one.
They're awesome.
Yeah.
Yeah, two weeks is all we can do. But I thought last night the house gonna go away in that windmill.
It was a forestry day.
I left my house this morning, my dumpster was across the street. So pull it back.
Was it dumpster?
My, I just have one of those poly carts.
Oh, yeah.
Exactly, I can pull it off the street and it blew across the street.
Must have been.
It was. I pulled them both, I have two of them, pulled them both up next to the house, but.
Your train using John Deere, right, Joe?
Mm-hmm. So we can get a high lift loader the way we were supposed to have been gotten when that one was got.
Okay.
But it wasn't that, it was delivery.
Have you got forks for your loader?
Yes.
Do you have forks in your big loader?
Mm-hmm.
I was gonna say, I got called into halls, fire trucks from Carmen and Allee back to Newcastle.
Mm-hmm.
They're big. Probably need you guys' trailers, may as well need the loaders loaded. We ought to just try to get it rutted and dry the damn things down there. Be thirty mile an hour, but further.
Just let us know.
Helen's Fire Department?
No, Allee and Carmen.
Allee and Carmen.
Let me know what you need.
Whatever you need, boy.
It's true, notice the guy at Notre, Cecil of those old fire.
Oh, yeah, yeah.
What's his name?
Cecil.
Cecil.
I can see his face.
I can too.
I can too. I can think, he sees, he's got, what, three kids, or four kids in college right now, or about two or one now, so.
Can't remember his last name.
Anyhow, yeah, they're all big giant, four, or, or six foot six army.
Right.
Yeah, Mike, Judd, Judd Slavchak's looked at me, said, they're big.
They gotta take them back then, they were on the forestry.
Right. And all they do is take, well, first time we did stuff, we made, we took care of it and make sure they run, load them up and everything else. They just got the fore flip, pick up, thumbs down, Jeff is mad.
That one we left with the forestry department out there ten years ago, we called, what do you want us to do with it? Whatever you want to do with it, we don't want it back, so we're like out there.
I make the most of proof.
All in favor? Request to remove Carl Wilfman as receiving officer, district two, and request to appoint out a rice receiving officer.
I make the motion.
Second.
Aye.
Aye.
Golly, Cecil, I know his name.
So do I, and I cannot think of.
Michael, Cecil Michael.
Michael, that's right. I wanted to say Mitchell when I knew it was, right?
Yeah, because really the things are supposed to be in the fire station, not part of Allee, not but South Beach.
Okay, we're ready for the amendment for the resolution to retail sale of alcoholic beverages by the individual drink. We're on premises. And it's being amended to have a effective date.
Yes, they're on the proclamation, it's on that, on the election proclamation down there after the question.
We need to sign both, did he cry?
Yes.
That's why I got brain smart, instead of brain fart.
And I sent that to you, Monita, you should have that when you get back to Jeff.
Do they need to sign the whole papers?
I would suggest.
Yeah.
Chairman of the Board of Commissioners.
On the other one, you're all three signed it, but.
Both of them are there.
Yeah.
That's both of them. To be honest, it was, I was calling major county election board, see what they all dig, because they already had their, yeah, it does, it helped a lot, didn't it? Yeah.
Passed a little, more, a little more overwhelming than I thought it would have, major county.
Well, what's that?
Seventy, sixty, seventy or eighty percent it passed by. I can't really exactly.
Yeah, it passed seventy some percent.
Pretty overwhelming.
Yeah. I move with Jeff's amendment.
I second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Private property easement, southeast quarter, four twenty-five nine, remove trees and right away put on the farmers' site.
I just got told to just put on farmer. Just, Monita's got one. Right now, we have two of her. Now, does that need to go to Kelly too? I thought so. This is mile east of Jeff. Well, the farmer on the north side of the old railroad tracks, or who has, who got the farm, campus, the farmer down, Triggs, the other guy, not there anymore. They want some trees out, and the castle's on the south side, but there's that too.
Good way to do it.
Well, they need to be out, so they get the equipment through there, they can fix our roads.
I move with Jeff's easement.
I second that, baby.
All in favor? And written quotes for electrical for burning to fire department for new fire station.
The three, and then there's a top is, that's a request to you guys to hard turn, to install those.
I didn't know they were even gonna do anything. Yeah, Triggs County had that in Northland League, and he left town, bugged out, also campus had it. Because I went by after one Thursday, it was getting later, I was out later, it's dark in front of his house, never moving stuff out of the house. I got told he never paid a dime on my treasure.
I move with Jeff's, or they need, they just want to know our recommendation.
No, we have.
For Archer.
They recommend, there's this Archer, so you guys have to.
I will accept Archer.
I'd like to see it for it, is it the one they got?
It's only one that responded. One of them can't be, because of his son, and the other one, they never respond, Northwest is out. That you did.
Really jump Thomas, yeah, the son guard, did you read that?
I'll second it.
Aye. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Good amount, twenty-three thousand eight forty-nine.
Right.
Eight forty-nine?
Yeah.
Was the building already there?
Right.
Yeah, it's a new build, new extension, they're getting put in.
Oh, it's an extension up there.
Oh, when they built it up.
Like I said, connected it to the fire station one on south.
Where the old town hall used to be.
Of course.
Yeah, no, well, you know, the new fire station's over in the Canada.
They built a new one.
Oh, it's over there, yeah.
It's over the West County, West County barn.
West County barn, yeah.
Well.
Rob's the owner, did our and re, re, like.
Is that who it is?
Rob Seamp.
Rob Seamp, yeah.
We don't want to use.
I can't read Walker either, so.
Microsoft Corporation is the county vendor.
I make the motion.
I have some paperwork, I'm gonna go ahead and give it to all of you guys, this is the service agreement, the purchase order, or the purchase agreement, and then just.
Sign the service agreement.
No, it's just information.
Why do we have to approve them as a vendor?
That's the same thing.
We don't have to.
We don't have to, we think we can automatically put them on as a vendor.
Well, yeah, but the reason why I had this put on the agenda was because with Microsoft Business, I had to have it approved through. I mean, Amazon Business, I had to have that approved through the commissioners.
That was because of the, of it being Amazon, that was because auditors requested that, so that's why we did that.
Okay, well, I don't, didn't know what would be involved in what paperwork would be necessary for Microsoft, so I went ahead and put it on the agenda, so it would be clear in case there was anything that came about later that would need that approval to the commissioners, based off of what I went through with the Amazon Business, so. It's never a bad thing to put anything through the commissioners meeting to be talking about whatnot.
I second it, that way it's done.
Yeah, we got Amazon running, nothing running yet?
All in favor?
Aye.
You can have that as you wish. And is that, is that account for Amazon Business all good and ready to go? So it still will be a good vendor to have with the county too as well.
Right.
I have some emails, Monita, I'll send that information over on some of the contact and information that I've gotten from Microsoft.
Any unforeseen business.
You need to do, you need to do rain dance.
I just washed my cars again.
Huh?
I washed my cars again.
I did wash mine.
Did you?
I did.
Do it again, you wanna go work my pickup?
Mine, mine too.
I move with Karen, I second.